And if I could get everybody to turn their phones to a silent or off setting. The next thing is the approval of the agenda. Trustee Maynard made a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do I have a second? Segmented by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Uh, the minutes, approval of minutes for the special meeting of April 27th, 2021. Does he have anything, Mr. Teeman?
As noted in the minutes from 2021, we made the 11th, no.
April 27th.
First line states, "Meeting open at 4:00 a.m. should be 4:00 p.m."
Okay.
That's the form we suggested on there.
Would these sort of they okay?
Do I have a motion?
With that correction, if motion accept minutes of the 25th, they have written April 26th.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by trustee Smaga to accept the minutes as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Francisco, we're asking him, is with us now?
Next thing is the resolution 2021.8, accepting and approval of the 2019-2020 audit reports as presented by Axiall. Jaime, I'm not gonna mess with your last name.
That's actually Francisco.
Okay.
Francisco, can you hear us?
Yes, but you guys can't hear me?
We can hear you, you have the floor, sir.
Perfect, awesome, thank you, everyone. So unfortunately, um, you know, Jaime isn't with us today. We had two conversations and we split up. And so I will be, uh, presenting the financial statements for the, uh, for fiscal year 20 for the village of Pabac. Um, just wanna start off by, um, thanking everyone for allowing us to perform the audit of fiscal year 2020. And so, um, has everyone had a chance to look through the financials? Yes, okay, perfect. And so I'm, I'm wanting to keep this, um, kind of brief during the actual conference. You know, we went over the report, um, in a lot more detail. Um, and so I'll just kind of go through it quickly. Um, I'll start off on page, page two. This is the independent auditor report. Um, I do wanna point out that the report on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. Um, this is the highest form of opinion. There's really nothing better than this. This is the best type of opinion that a, um, UNFCE can receive. And so, um, moving on to page five. This is the state of net decision. So this is basically a summary of, um, both government and business type of activity. This, um, will show balances, or, you know, all of the asset balances as well as all of the liability balances. Um, the major items that I wanted to point out are, um, our cash here, cash investments. Um, cash is, um, for both the government and business, um, activities is higher or was higher at the end of, uh, at, at the end of June in comparison to the prior year. For government activities, cash increased by 167,300. And, um, for business type activities, it decreased by, um, by 71,968. Overall, it was, um, it was an increase of about 96,000 for the village. Um, and then, um, right down at the bottom, we have our state of net decision. So prior year's balance was 4,428,678 for the, um, for the government activities and for the business activities, that was 5,879,858. Overall, the balance has increased by approximately 154,000. And, um, the main reason for this, for this increase, so every year, um, if you look kind of towards the middle, you'll see pension related. It's, it's, um, there's two sections for pension related. There's one that's at the very bottom of assets, right before liabilities. You'll see there pension related and for government, or let's go ahead and look at the total. For pension related, it's 291,45. And then, um, a little bit further down, almost towards bottom, you'll see under liabilities. You'll see pension related again. And you'll see on there that the total was 56,423. So these amounts, uh, you know, this is something that the village does not have control over. This is determined by, um, by Kara. And so every year, these numbers are determined off of, off of 2019 balances. And so, um, we follow a report that's provided by Kara and, um, these amounts are given to us. And so these amounts fluctuate year to year. It's, it's something that the village really doesn't have control over. Um, this is, um, let me open up the floor a little quick. So this is, this is related to, um, the Public Employees Repairment Association of New Mexico. And so, um, you know, depending on where the state is at every year, those, those balances change for, for all entities. Those balances are given to us and then they are presented on the financials. Does anyone have any questions over any of the balances here? And again, this is, this is a summary. If, um, kind of towards the back of the report, you'll see, um, different funds. And, um, the different funds, it will show the balances, right to the assets, liabilities, as well as revenue and expenditures. Page five is a summary of all those pages. And so let's see, moving on to page 40. I do wanna mention that during fiscal year 20, um, there were, um, a lot of, um, audit standards that, um, were postponed, right? So, um, so we had a lot of significant accounting policies that should have taken effect in FY20. However, due to COVID, all of those accounting policies were postponed. Um, and so during fiscal year 2021, those, um, those new accounting policies will affect the financials. Um, some of them include leases, um, as well as, I think there's some related to debt. Um, and so the only change that the financials have this year far as the, the notes to the financial statements is good note clarity, which, um, is, um, risk and economic uncertainty. And so this basically states that, you know, we're not sure how COVID has, you know, um, as, as of the end of two, we weren't, or the village wasn't sure how the pandemic, um, was going to have an effect on, on, on the village itself. We weren't sure if, you know, if revenue were going to decrease, making the same or increase as a result of, you know, any, um, any funding provided to, to the village, um, related to COVID. And so we did put, um, this note on there and, and this note was, you know, um, is shown on, on all government, um, entities. And so other than that, I think that's, that's, that's the only, the only, um, change from, from prior year financials. Moving on to page 63. This is the independent auditors report on internal control for financial reporting and on compliance and other matters, based on an audit of financial statements reported in accordance with the PIA, which is government auditing standards. And so this report basically states that, um, it gives a brief explanation of what a deficiency is, um, as well as a significant deficiency. And, um, the audit did not identify any, um, any significant deficiencies or, you know, any deficiencies. Um, however, we did note two instances of, um, non-compliance. And so, um, on page 64, under compliance and other matters, those two findings are shown on there as finding 2020-001 and 2020-002. Turning over to page 66 is a summary of the findings. And so the very first finding is a repeated finding from prior year. This is related to accounts receivable in regards to late penalty assessment. So during our test work for accounts receivable, we noted that in one of five transactions tested, late payments, um, were not properly assessed. After carefully reviewing customer accounts, we know the village, um, was not assessing a 10% penalty, um, based on previous month's bill as opposed to the entire amount asked due, um, as of the 26th day of the month. And so, um, per discussion with the, um, with village management, um, it was noted that, um, you know, during last year's finding, the, the, the village did, you know, take the necessary steps to, to, to make sure that, um, um, a 10% penalty was, you know, um, assessed. Um, however, you know, there might've been a couple of accounts that were, were missing. Maybe, you know, this could've been, we only tested five and during those five, we did identify one. And so, um, you know, that, that could be the only one. Um, and, and again, during our audit procedures, we don't test 100% of transactions. If we were to test 100% of transactions, the audit would take months to complete, right? And so we look at all account balances and, um, we do our, our testing based on samples. And, uh, it's all done randomly. And so then this is finding, the first finding, moving on to finding number two, which is 2020-002. Last year, this finding was identified as 2019-002. And, um, this is related to travel. And so during our review of travel, um, and for human expenditures, we noted that in one of five transactions tested, an employee was reimbursed for purchasing two early flight check-ins that cost $20 for a total amount of $40. We also noted that in one of five transactions tested, the employee utilized the village's credit card for travel and did not check out the front report he was using for purchases. And so, um, the village did not make any progress for this finding, um, as the year ended June 30, 2020. Um, moving over to page 68. This is a summary of, um, prior year findings. And so as you can see on here, the first two were repeated and modified. And then we did, um, have one that was resolved, um, finding 2019-003, internal controls over fuel cards. And so I, I do wanna say that, um, you know, those two findings that are on there are, are very small findings. Those are, you know, um, are shown on there, on there as other non-compliance. Um, so it's the smallest form of finding, you know, um, a lot of times, you know, just stuff slips through the facts and, you know, um, things happen, right? And, um, the best way to avoid findings is to, you know, just document, document, document. You always just, just keep documenting, you know, um, if, if, you know, someone isn't able to approve a form that needs to be approved, maybe have an email sent out, um, you know, we're always looking for documentation to, to back up, um, on why something wasn't performed. And so, um, I'm, I'm sure you know, these two findings will be, you know, it's, it's something that will easily be resolved, um, for this coming year. And, um, so hopefully, you know, this year, there's no findings. Um, other than that, um, I, I think that's it. Um, you know, I, the state auditor did approve the audit, um, it's been approved, it's, it's available on the website. It did take them a while, um, to approve it and this was, this wasn't just for the village. Um, this is across the board for all government entities. Um, um, we, we perform, you know, um, audits for, for many government entities and, um, state auditor's office was, um, really behind this year. I'm not sure if it's, you know, because of, you know, people who are working from home. And so they did approve it and, um, it's, it, you know, it's, it's on there. Um, it, it was submitted to state auditor's office on time before the deadline of, um, December 15th. Um, we submitted the audit on 14th. And so, um, everything looks good. Um, I do think that this coming year, we might have a single audit. And so, um, with the single audit, we do perform more test work. Um, there's also an additional report that will be added to the financial statements over the single audit. And, um, if, you know, if that's the case, we do plan on, um, starting the audit earlier this year, just to give us more time with, um, single audit. And, um, other than that, um, that's, that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
The single audit will be on the CDGB senior standard edition.
And so the way we determine whether a single audit is needed or not, we have a threshold. Um, so if, if, um, if expenditures, federal expenditures exceed $750,000 for the year, a single audit is required.
Alright. Anybody have any questions? Sure. Okay. So now we just need to accept the audit, correct?
I'll move to accept your audit report.
Trustee Teeman moves to accept audit report as presented. Do I have a second?
I should.
Segmented by trustee Maynard. Any further questions? Is this a roll call? Okay, all in favor? Bruce?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, the audit is accepted, it was a roll call unanimous vote.
Francisco. Thank you, Francisco.
Thank you, Barbara. I, I sent you an email, I'm not sure if we received it on, um, regarding work orders.
I did.
You wanted to mention it, you know, as the board, I'm not sure if anyone has it, regarding your work orders.
Um, I have talked with the mayor about it previously and he's okay with it. Um, so I will mention it to them or you can mention it, whichever you prefer, but we're going to put that into play so that we can reduce the cost of triple work orders being printed and doing it electronically and paper. The guys having to pick it up from here. It'll save on, uh, fuel, it'll save on production man hours, it'll save on, you know, filing, everything. So we're going to put that into play.
Perfect, and I did talk to Jaime over, we discussed it. And, um, you know, as long as we, we have some trail to follow during the audit as to, you know, when the order was put in and, um, just, you know, to keep the quality. So emails were fine, we're able to follow the date on the email. As long as you guys keep, um, um, you know, just track of all of them on a spreadsheet, you know, we're, we're fine with that. And then on the email, um, if, if you just implement a, a template that has all of the information that a normal work order would have, the work order number, then, um, that's, you know, that's, that's good enough for us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, you have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Can I make a, fairly suggesting that we get some external speakers and aim them at the audience?
We have some up on the wall, we just can't get them functioning as of this time.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure that the electricians hooked them up.
Yes, we need to have some, an AV guy come and, um, test some stuff. Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. Uh, the first thing on the mayor's report is, uh, Tom Lee has resigned from planning and zoning. He's been on there for several years, I'm not sure how long, but he, he really does enjoy Plowcroft and he was a good help for many years. So I'd like to tell him thank you, I know he's not here, but I would like to thank him for his time on there. And so we do have two openings on planning and zoning. And I have my recommendations. I have got two people send in letters of interest, I guess that's what it's called, letters of interest. Uh, the first one that I would like to recommend is Jessica Beach. That is from the ski area, are you back there, Jessica?
I'm here.
You're here. And the second one, it's kinda weird, I have more interest in planning and zoning. Seems like there's always been an opening, so. The second one is, uh, Mark Tatum. Is Mark here? And I think both of them will be great assets to planning and zoning. You can see their letters of interest if you'd like to. Oh, Elena?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm not as prepared as Barbara. Read your own letters.
Stick with the script.
Stick with the script, okay, so I do need, I would like a motion to accept my recommendations for planning and zoning.
I would make that recommendation before they have second thought.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a motion.
That's a motion.
I have a motion, I want trustee Smaga to accept
Mark Tatum and
Mark Tatum and Jessica Beach in planning and zoning. Do I have a second?
You do.
I have a second from trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now raises go strictly on percentages. Okay. Have I made agenda? Let's thank both of those for volunteering. Oh, okay, I just threw that in, Tom Lee didn't have it. Stick to the script. I tie those together, I'm sorry. Okay.
If it works?
Well, we have openings on B&amp;Z, 2O, we don't anymore. And we have one opening on the library board. If anybody is interested, um, you can shoot me an email, a letter of interest, and we will definitely consider you. The library board is very important. We did fill one position last month and then we did have one new opening.
You're not, not in mind of this, are they not meeting virtually?
They are.
Uh, no, they're actually meeting in person now, but they're meeting quarterly.
Yes, it's quarterly, not every month. So it's not a, it's not near as big of a
Commitment?
Commitment as planning and zoning. Planning and zoning is not difficult, is it, Tom?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Next is, now this one is, uh, one that I would like to do is I'm gonna look at creating a committee to review the large balance water bills. And a lot of that has to do with the lake fees. Now, having to do with that, that was also part of our findings on the audit. So we need to, I, we really need to readjust those ordinances. We need to figure out what is, how we need to write the ordinances, because there is a lot of flaws in the way they're written, just going through them.
You're talking about just the water?
The water sewer, that whole ordinance on, on the in the billing and the lake fees, all your utilities. We need to have those rewritten where they're clearer, easier to understand and easier to follow. Right now, they're a little bit complicated and intermingled and out, definitely outdated. But some of this, the, the, the lake fees, we got some people that are more in depth in lake fees than they are from water fees and that's just not right. It needs to be the other way around.
What's your idea of a committee?
I would like, uh, at least one trustee. Uh, I know I've talked to Shay who is in charge of our water billing and she'll be on it. I would like some Yes, Jubal will definitely be on it, because he's part of our water system.
Welcome to the
Aren't you glad you showed up, Jubal? And I would like some members of the community if I have any interest. If I can, you can shoot me an email or a, or a letter, you can just drop off a letter of interest.
That volunteers will be on that.
Okay.
Trustee on it?
I do want a trustee on it. At least one, no more than two. If we have more than two, then we have to announce it every time it is a meeting. And which, it'll be open anyway.
So is this committee just gonna get the ordinances rectified?
I wanna look at the I wanna look at the ordinance as we have it and rewrite it. Now, obviously, they won't rewrite it and put it into play, it will have to come in front of all of us. So we need recommendations and we need to clean it up. We need to make it a whole lot more simplified. Half my complaints since I've been the mayor is about water bills and how they're working and now they're not. The other half is rots, which is actually the same complaint. Yes, sir?
Will they just be in, uh, going over just the water billing or all ordinances?
It will be the entire ordinance.
So it will be So, so like levels one, two, and three of water?
Correct. Commercial, residential, sizetaps, because it's all one, one ordinance.
Well, what are, like, our water level restrictions?
Restrictions. I'm not sure if that's the same or not. It is.
They will go over that?
Yeah, so would you like to volunteer?
Oh, I think if you get too many village employees on it, then it's kind of
Okay, well, we'll get your input.
I will put my input in, I'll work with Jubal.
I would appreciate it if you would work with Jubal. Jubal does need to be in there as the, as a supervisor.
Because our, our level restrictions on water, when they go from a one to a two to a three, when you go from a two to a three, basically all it's doing is telling you that you can't wash vehicles.
Right.
There's really nothing else in there on a level three that
If that's the reason I wanna do a committee is because I don't wanna rehash everything in an open meeting.
Okay, now just ask.
But yes, I would absolutely like to have your involvement.
Okay.
I don't know about too many employees on the committee, I do want to have some general public. But, but you need to be involved at least from an advisory standpoint.
I would possibly entertain being on that if I know the length and duration.
Duration is, is quick as you can get a good ordinance to the trustees. So it might be one hour, probably not. But that's
I will give it a think.
Okay. Another part on this one. I do want to get into this a little bit deeper. Unfortunately, some of it has some names involved because I wanna show you some of the things that is going on. So I will ask for a executive session for part of it so I can, there won't be any decisions done or anything like that. I just want to inform the trustees exactly what's wrong. And obviously, without hurting any public.
You want to do that towards the end of the
I would like to do that towards the end, which is I have a good crowd and I don't want to lose them. And executive sessions tends to run people out. So next one, preliminary discussion for the ICIP fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. We do the ICIP every year. And it's it's a five-year plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we always have our top five. And I am definitely learning on this.
So, yeah, me too. Basically, this is a printout of how it stands right now as it was submitted last year. Towards the back, or the second page, you'll see a summary of the thirteen that we currently have. I've crashed at the first one because we received the acquisition of property. We were funded for that this year. That's the acquisition of the wastewater treatment plant, first property. And then the other ones that are down towards the bottom of that summary page, it will tell you that it's fully funded, fully funded, fully funded, the project completed. So that pretty much tells you that four of these thirteen are gonna fall off. I need you to do your homework. We want to review what we have, kind of come back in a month, month and a half to determine what priority we're gonna put them in, and we're going to need additional ones that we can put on there. Although at the time, I mean, that they only pay attention to the top five.
The, that's what I've been told, is the top five. You have to have it on this list if you want to do any of them. They will give money for the top five.
But if you have considerations of other things that we need that that are not in here, you need to let me know so that we can get that in there. We'll get it prioritized probably in the August meeting if the submission is due at the end of September.
This one, this is where I was been discussing about moving the Public Safety Center up towards number one. That's one that gave a lot of money this year. Pretty much anybody that asked for public safety, that thing, we didn't get that because ours was down at like number eight or nine. But all the people who asked for public safety, that's one of the governor's initiatives, and that's something that we need right now with the police department, the fire department.
On our on our water bill?
Yes.
Can can we alter the language of these that break it on here?
Yes.
Because thi- this one, I read over it earlier, for a new water well in the city limits. We, that's that's not a very likely source. The, as we've talked in the last month over our water crisis, it, I think we could keep that very high up there, but expand where we're gonna live for this, to acquire water rights, acquire a well, highly end drill well, get it where it's more than just our village limits, I think. It's gonna include the pipeline if we get out of the city limits. Anyway, pardon me. I think then then you can get out there and find some new water. That's what we, that is the goal of this. We just kind of work too tight.
Yeah, we we Pitting ourselves in a corner now. Yeah, this is a good one for everybody to, this is a homework. So we have plenty of them on here, but we will absolutely accept new ones. Be able to hash it out.
And revisions.
What's that?
And revisions.
Oh, yes, and revision.
Once we figure out what to do.
Well, we will get it figured out.
Can I, on the heavy equipment, that one showed we already had and spent, if I read that right, we've already been funded, we spent some money on.
Yes, sir. The
Yeah, okay.
Mini excavator.
Got the mini excavator, the skid steer, the dump truck.
Dump truck.
That's what I've been asking. That came out of this request. And and we we did that because they didn't give us all the money. They just gave us part of it.
No, they gave everything that I needed. We didn't, or no, they didn't. No, I don't remember.
No, they gave, they gave you everything. As a matter of fact, we gave them back thirteen thousand.
Yeah, we gave them back thirteen thousand because I could spend
Okay, so so we're just gonna ask for a new list of heavy equipment. Okay, well, that's all right. That's what I'm trying to do is clarify.
Well, no, that should be taken off there. The only thing we should be having on there right now would be a water truck, a grader, a
Evac?
Mini vac trailer, and then a roller. That's what that's what we're looking at right now.
So I I like the whole idea of it, because it leaves us open.
Seeing that on the scope of work, that's what it's telling us we wanted. But but then it shows where we have had money on it. I said, well, I didn't understand, so thank you.
That's part of the reorganizing and And not to don't pin us down to anything. Okay. Do you have anything else on that one?
Do we want to revisit this next month?
I think we need to revisit this one up until we approve it.
We'll just keep keep it on the agenda and go over it again?
I think so. So we, at least it'll get you all looking at it, and you'll look at it for a couple days after the meeting and get Each meeting will look at it a little bit different.
You can always shoot me an email if you have suggestions of changes or anything, and then I can make rotations and move it up in that meeting.
Okay. And I know there was something else on my report that I cannot think of at this point in time. Sure, it was important. Let's move on to reports. Uh, Keith Lauter, does anybody look at this Keith Lauter report?
I do.
Uh, Michael, did you have anything there?
Uh, we got some engineering done on the summer tubing, waiting for a little bit more engineering on it. We've got a hydro seeder to take care of some of the reseeding stuff on the tubing hill there, and so we've been in contact with Turf Maker, and they're coming up with a solution on the right type of mulch, look like that stuff. The the mulch they were recommending, it's gotta come out of Canada. As everybody knows, everything's moving really slow right now. Everything's behind, so um just kind of working with them on recommendations on seed, mulch, all that that kind of stuff. Hurry up and wait.
I understand. I think it's very exciting that you're gonna open a restaurant here.
That's the moss lady here.
Doesn't seem so exciting.
I have a question. Is that tubing, will the locals, will it be affordable enough for the locals to be able to do that?
The summer tubing?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. We're working on it. Some people are charged by the hour, Red River, they do a by the run or they have two different slopes of it. They do a by the hour as well as a by the run, so we're kind of looking at a bunch of those options. Don't know for sure.
Might get some of those kids up off there.
There you go. Wear them out.
Okay, Michael, make sure that your summer stuff is on that exhibit seat
Okay.
On the on the lease. Just to keep everything clean as much work as we've all done on the last, what, two years?
Dec- December twenty-seventh.
More than two years.
So I'll make that happen and send it off to you. You make sure I get the board in line.
Okay, let's move on. And we are in I lost my second page. Still getting it. Okay, we're moving on to the other reports. We got the police report. Would you like to add anything, Kevin? Are you good?
Um, just that I went to the chief's conference, and July is gonna be a whole new world, a qualifying meeting. To the point that I think sometime in the next month, we should probably have a workshop to talk about it because long process is gonna completely change from July first. So I mean, it's the life really is just going through the same thing as us, and so maybe we can talk about some policy changes and different things, but it's gonna take two or three hours. That's not something we can do in a couple of minutes.
Okay. When would you like to have that done?
I'm nervous about the council. I think we need to come.
And how long in the future from now?
Probably within the next two weeks because we're gonna have a a Zoom meeting with the Association of Governor's Representatives on July fourteen, or sorry, June fourteen. Supposedly, now she wants to help us out, so we'll see.
That was May eighteen, six per week on. That's six on a Tuesday night. Two weeks from today.
May eighteen?
Yes. Any problems with that one?
It's one week.
One week from today. So. Well, let's go May twenty-fifth, which is two weeks from today. Twenty-fifth. I do not need to go one week. You good?
I'm impressed, you.
That's here in Wisconsin.
What time?
Do you like six, or you want to go a little earlier?
Well, Kevin thinks it's gonna take a couple hours, and then I might like to go early.
Okay. You're the one who is working.
The whole town is comfortable with you. Well, four o'clock. I mean, is that comfortable with everybody else?
That was okay. Okay, gonna do changes? Okay, four o'clock on May twenty-fifth, we will have a special workshop to discuss the new form of policing in Cloudcroft, the kinder, gentler police of Cloudcroft. Okay. Next to, we don't have anything on the library. We have stuff in the library.
She did call today and apologize. She's in long cruises and wasn't able to make the the trip, but she is planning a year-end kind of review for next
For next year?
Yeah, for next month.
Something that she would like to do, that she has brought up, is she'd like to have it, all of us go to the library and give a, give us a tour. The library has changed dramatically in the last couple of years since she's been there.
And what we had spoken about was doing the next council meeting, rather than doing the council meeting here, doing it at the library so that she could give you a walkthrough. Uh, let me know all the different things that she's changed, what she's doing, and then we can do with our council meeting there.
That'd be easy enough to do. I, they should be accessed there.
I set up the I T over there. I have plenty of
Yeah. I mean, there's meetings there. Everybody's friendly as here.
At the same time?
Same time, same meeting, just we'll have it at the library.
Talking about next week of council meeting being in the library, is there any kind of legal?
No, you can hold it anywhere.
Is on, we posted, correct?
I was just posted the place. But you're not talking about the police meeting or not?
No, the police meeting will be here.
This will be the next regular schedule.
The next regular scheduled trustee meeting will be at the Michael Limson Library. And I would like the trustees to show up at least thirty, forty-five minutes early and get the tour.
That'll be the fifteenth. Nope, that'll be the eighth.
That's me. I'm learning new things on calendars.
Second Tuesday.
That would be the eighth of June. Okay, first, you, look, you first is the first.
All right. I wanted to ask a question on our on our water bills, like the monthly reconciliation. I think I've asked this before, and I just don't remember the answer. If if we had receivables of one fifty-seven, eight eleven, and only deposits of like ten thousand dollars, what why is that?
That can be further explained in the executive session.
Okay. And I made a note on some of our expenses. We bought forty-one tons of gravel this last month at eight dollars and fifty cents a ton. The, as we go to reworking our roads and trying to get them to be good quality gravel roads, we can afford saving. That that was just an example. The gravel's pretty affordable. It's locally sourced, and and it's after we can move ourselves. So so I think those are all good things.
Now, with the water reports, Mr. Corvus, sir, we had some interesting conversations today, and we have been for a while.
Yes, we have.
I would like a a little personal report if I could.
I'll make it as quick as I can. So a couple of weeks ago, we found two major leaks in town. So up to that point, we were struggling with well two. Uh, it was running at like one P S I, which, if anybody knows water, that's like two point three one feet of water. Uh, our, we were just running out. We found those two big leaks, so we were able to switch the wells to auto. Well, two came back. On static, it would be at, let's see, sixty-four feet of water pumping. After eighteen hours, we were running at twelve P S I. So a little right around twenty-four feet. But statewide drilling came out two days ago, pulled the pump, but that day, that morning, I checked it after pumping for twelve hours, we were back down to one P S I. So they pulled the pump, uh, camera the well. Unfortunately, the the slots are wide open in there, so cleaning the well wasn't gonna increase flow any. We still went ahead and cleaned the well because our last record showed that it was cleaned in ninety-six. So they went ahead and cleaned the well, and we'll get a new, we're gonna downgrade the pump from a three horsepower to a two horsepower, which will give us from thirty-four gallons a minute to right around twenty-five gallons a minute, and we're not out pumping the water coming in. So we should be able to hold there for a while. If we get monsoons and they come back, we can always pull that pump out and go back up to our thirty-five gallon a minute pump. But as of right now, we're gonna have to downsize the pump in that well.
How how deep is that well?
That well's, it's a hundred and fifty-four feet deep, but we have the pump set at one forty because when we camered it, uh, eight feet of that had collapsed in, so we're basically right at like one forty-five, and the pump's set at one forty.
So my question is, when the they came in, is that casing or just
That's just dirt, silt, rock. So hopefully, when they cleaned it and they pulled that out, and we should be back there again. But most of our wells, from what I understand, our pump is right there as low as we can go. So it's not like we got ten feet of water underneath that pump. I mean, we're sent as low as we can go in all our wells.
Yeah, I I have a question on, let's see, pumps, I mean, well, six and nine, both of these, if I'm reading your report right, have the most water in the bottom of them.
Yes.
Six has a hundred and twenty-five feet, and nine had ninety-seven. A question was what, what size pumps are in those? And since you have, since you have, that's the deeper wells, but they also have the most water.
I think those are one horsepower.
Do you want to increase those pump sizes?
Well, no, because we decreased those before because we were out pumping the well. So right now, we're just holding right there, which is good because of the size of the meter that we have in there. It's a one-inch meter. We just don't want to, and they're doing great. I don't want to upsize the pump and potentially be right back where we are. Those I can run twenty-four seven, and for some reason, they stay right there.
What is the casing size on this? Do you know right off?
Uh, on which ones?
The six and nine.
Six and nine is, uh, six is an eight inch, nine is an eight inch.
That's significant.
Right. And then on well two, ever since we've been having the problems, we've started monitoring it daily. So I have a list here. If you guys wanted to see it on the different P S Is and levels and fluctuations and everything throughout the two and a half
So now you're set, you said like twenty or twenty-five gallons a minute down?
Not yet. There, the well's out of commission since yesterday while they're cleaning and doing everything. Hopefully, they reset the pump tomorrow, and then we'll be between twenty-five and Hopefully they reset the pump tomorrow, and then we'll be between, uh, twenty-five and twenty-eight gallons a minute. And then with that, I can throttle the well down if I need to restrict it down. Cause we debated on going to a, a one and a half horsepower, but then that's only twenty to twenty-two gallons a minute. And if I needed to bump it up, I can't bump up, but I can always restrict down. So we went with the two horse.
And, and your multiple pages, were you trying to show us the snapshots?
Uh, multiple pages is the month before.
Okay. Yes, sir. You said, here's where we were.
Here's where we were, here we are now. So some of the wells are doing worse. And like I, uh, one of them, I think is well two on pumping. It shows that we were at like one PSI or oh, it shows us that we're at seven feet on, uh, the twenty-sixth. And then when we found the leaks, we, uh, on the seventh of May, we were able to jump up to twenty-eight feet with, which is a, a positive of twenty-one feet after finding those leaks.
So we're not demanding the wells from us?
No, so where we were, I mean, we still are, by no means am I saying we're out of the woods. Uh, come July fourth, we might still go back to needing to haul water.
Sure.
But as we are right now, because we found those leaks, we were able to put the wells on auto instead of running them all the time. And they're recharging. So they're turning off for, uh, four to six hours a day. So we're able to recharge a little bit.
So somewhere in the population, bro.
Yeah, and with that, with handing out all the notices and everything, I've seen a significant, uh, the, the public is doing their due diligence. Uh, in the last two days, the, in the twenty-four, cause I checked the, all the meters about eight to eight-thirty every morning. And in the last two days, this morning and yesterday morning, we have done a hundred, eight thousand gallons out to town yesterday. And this morning, it was a hundred and ten thousand gallons out to town. So that's a significant drop from like one forty to one sixty a day. So people are really trying to help. You can see it, so.
And we did a visual inspection on every meter, correct?
Yes, we, the maintenance crew walked the whole town. We did find a couple of, uh, uh, Mike Braxton found a pretty big leak over on Curlew, down towards the end. We found a couple of stopping leaks that were spraying out the weep hole. So we have replaced, repaired those and fixed them. So right now, as in meter cams, we're pretty tight. Now, of course, uh, main lines and everything, they're lead packed. You're gonna have leaks. I mean, we don't know where those are. Not unless you bring in somebody that has an ultrasonic ground penetrator and, but.
So there's still quite a significance of, of production and loss. So maybe that's a consideration. I don't know what that's worth or, uh, to say that. I mean, I don't know, guidance from you guys would be beneficial?
Yeah, now, I don't, somebody had mentioned talking to, um, uh, Rural Water. And they will come out and, and help with, you know, trying to find leaks in town. Um, did, did we do anything with, I don't know if anybody contacted them or not. No, nobody's talked, contacted them yet. I don't know exactly what kind of equipment they have to come bring in to check. I don't know, but they will come help towns.
I was gonna ask, uh, like how does Ruidosa, you know, is, is another mountain town, they have similar problems to ours. How, how do they isolate, uh, their systems to identify those leaks?
That I'm not sure. The only thing I know is Ruidosa's called us before to come over there and help them find leaks. So I mean, a little town like us going over there and helping them, I mean, I mean, we, we have with, with Dave, we, we've gone to Timberon, we've gone to High Rolls, we've gone to Ruidosa and helped them with our equipment to find leaks. So, uh, a lot of people look to us to find leaks. So.
So we have the most leaks, so we gotta help our.
Yeah, I mean, we're pretty good at finding our leaks. I mean, but, I mean, I found a leak for them over on, uh, Meacham. We had to shut down the highway. We got the, brought the cops in. They had to shut down the highway long enough for me to listen, and I found a pretty significant leak for them on Meacham. But.
What, so on your system total report, we have explained loss and unknown loss. So is the explained loss some of the, the big leaks we had? Will we possibly see a reduction in that next month?
Would you mind if I look at that? Cause I'm not exactly sure. So unknown water loss, thi- this right here is kind of a discrepancy to me. I've looked at this before.
Okay.
Um, so you've got your unbilled, unmetered consumption, so that's what we know, uh, that went out on the ground or something, but we didn't bill it, we didn't. Uh, like, uh, estimated customer metering inaccuracy. So the state, like, right there, I think it's five percent, possibly ten percent, where automatically you take this amount, you take ten percent off it because of homes, uh, service loans that are leaking and everything, the state says you can take that off. So that's what all that ends up being, is your explained water losses. We're saying that ten percent of this, we're explaining is, I mean, if you add like that up and, and these, that would be explained. So you take that off of that total right there. Unknown water loss is really what you're looking at, not this bottom line.
So we might see this reduction next month since you got that?
We should.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for?
And, oh, and to let you know, cause it's, is, we've got thirteen springs. We've taken five of them offline for no inflow or outflow. So I mean, our springs are dropping. So I had to report that to the state, and then they deem them in, uh, uh, offline. And then if we start getting water, I just call them back and tell them, hey, we're good to go, we're back online, and they'll put them back online. But out of thirteen springs, we got five that are offline. So that's, that's pretty bad.
Thank you for reading.
Yes, so.
And public, please keep doing what you're doing, cause it does help.
And then Jenny's checking on, cause the guy never got back to Scott, Jenny's checking on the, the signs from the road department that put at the beginning of the town to say, hey, we're in a level three water restriction, please conserve water. Uh, she's supposed to check on that tomorrow when she gets back.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Large effects. It's like we're the same. Game and staying the same.
It was, uh, same time, last year's down about almost eight percent. And, uh, the previous two months. Yeah, everybody just took those same three months from last year and same three months this year. Down here.
Yeah.
That, uh, I'd hope it was going to stay steady or go up, but that's seems like a lot of people just never went home. You know, our, our town numbers are.
Nobody wants to be in the big city. I don't blame them. We do have a fire chief here, if anybody has a fire question? And Jubal's here, if we have any maintenance questions? Okay. I think we've gone through a lot of reports. Do I have anything from you?
Did everybody read the taxation and revenue email that I sent to you about the GRTs?
Yes.
Okay. Just so that you understand that we're gonna lose eleven days of reporting of GRTs, and it'll be into the next fiscal year. They're messing around with the GRT so much right now, um, that I'm even seeing fluctuations in it that I don't, I think we're gonna redo. Um, but they're doing a lot of stuff with GRTs, trying to reconfigure all of our systems and everything.
Thursday, three to five, there's a Zoom meeting on grocery seed stacks, uh, given to as about state. Because there, there are big changes, and I guess it was, if I, I recently read that briefly, so if I'm wrong, correct me. But two thousand nineteen legislation was passed that, that didn't go into effect until this year.
That's right.
And it's changing, uh, uh, point of sale is, was gonna change up. It mentioned real estate in there, so historically, we don't pay grocery seed stacks on that sense. So I don't know if they're, now they're going to.
Right.
And, uh, but I'm sure they're trying to watch it because it's.
Initially, it sounded like it was all gonna be based on the internet. Like if I purchase something from Amazon, um, we of the municipality, because I live here, don't get the tax of the GRT. It's from wherever that, it comes from that plant. Well, initially, this all started, the talking was about, that was the only thing it was gonna affect, but it seems to have grown and grown and grown. And taxation and revenue is trying to catch up to it, change their systems, um, and be able to accommodate it. And so at the last eleven, I don't know why they would choose the last eleven days of a fiscal year to stop gathering any reporting. But that's what they're choosing to do, so.
Anyways, okay. Do I have any other questions having to do with reports, by the way? I'll take a motion to accept reports.
Make a motion to accept the reports?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sent by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Discussion action, approval for renewal of the Clock annual license. Even though we did not renew it last year, and the reason was because of COVID mess, they couldn't have anything anyway.
But I have one general question.
Yes.
For, uh, Jeff. Did Jeff, in this, he talks about any improvements, you know, are gonna remain with the property, et cetera. Do we need any language in there that any improvement may, these are these are built to Clockcroft properties. Does that need to be licensed contractors and permitted? But we don't say anything about it. And do we need that in the license?
Assume that if they're gonna make, make an improvement, they're gonna do it properly. If they don't, they can't do it.
Everything that they've done through my history with Clock is all asked you to go to the mayor.
Well, in the same language as in other license, that's why I asked you to say the general question, does it matter? It, it says with the permission of the, us absorb. So, uh, the permission we're gonna give is if it's permitted and done according to codes.
Part of, part of the approval process for that.
Is anybody here representing Clock tonight? Aye? Do we have a Clock representative?
We got three, actually. But I'm the vice president, so.
Would you like to add anything?
Uh, I didn't hear what you said.
Okay, we are looking at redoing the license.
Correct.
As written.
Okay.
Is there anything that you would like to add as to that? Uh, trustee Maynard was wanting to make sure that any construction done on there, which obviously you'd have to have permission for anyway, would be done properly by licensed contractors.
Okay, so I'm a licensed GB ninety-eight. So, um, if we did anything, it would be me or Jubal doing it, but we never touched the, the pavilion unless we get approval from the village and the mayor.
And I want to tell you, my comment, because this, this is kind of boilerplate language
Yes, sir.
in all of our licenses. That's why I was like, is, I asked Jeff, is it anything we should have worded differently? If it's, if it's by our permission only, then, then that's the time you pick it up. But some things may not require, you know, productions or permit.
Right.
So.
So, you know, I, I think everything's good.
Continue as is. Trustees?
Make motion to renew the license agreement between the village of Cloudcroft and Cloudcroft Light Opport Company effective today.
Okay, there is a motion on the table to renew the license agreement between Clock, the village of Cloudcroft and Cloudcroft Light Opport Company effective today. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
They moved a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is consideration approval of recommendation for P and Z. We don't. Sorry?
This is where you went off script, sir.
I did not. I don't know what y'all are talking about. Okay. Been there, done that. We're ahead of the game. That's what I asked you. Continuation of license agreement for James Sewell ice rink pending timeline on demolition and summer event usage. Now, on that one, uh, Don, you had this for several years, correct?
Since twenty eighteen.
Okay. Uh, my understanding on it, from what we just went through with Skierit, is if we just let it ride, everything stays the same. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, you could renew a license. I mean, it's revocable, it will, you can renew it as well.
But, so right now, if we don't do anything, he's still under what he was before the license expired?
Yes.
Unless we demolish it. Uh, that would be my thoughts on there, since we really don't know what's going on as far as demolition or anything. We, you continue on as you're doing it? And if we tear it up, we don't have to, cause I don't wanna pin you into something if we demolish the whole thing.
I have one question. Do we receive a, uh, GRT report?
No, sir.
That's gotta be in the way.
We received nothing.
We require all our other.
Our license, the only thing, in this license, in this license that we have with, um, Donald Wicklund, we charge an annual fee, flat fee, and that's it. It's not based on GRTs, any percentages, anything like that.
I have paid GRT.
Do you have, has the village received a report?
No, I'm saying, your license with the village, you do not pay any percentage of your GRT to us.
It is not required.
I, I know, that's what I'm saying.
That was the way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this license is, that, that he's currently under is just an annual flat fee. So when we renew a license or a lease, that would be something that we take into consideration somehow.
Well, it's not enough. It's four parts of it.
Correct.
Yes.
So when we're looking at licenses like with the, when we just did, it's a non-profit.
Correct.
So. As, uh, in my, in my view, we need to relook at the license. We do need to look at the license, cause we're, we have a license agreement with thirty-two degrees LLC.
We have a lease.
A lease. Maybe that's the direction.
Depending on what happens with this, it, it might roll into a lease, it might stay a license, it might. Yeah, we don't have this project completed yet.
Correct.
But what we're gonna, and, I mean, what, what we're gonna, we're gonna be at a point of limbo on both sides. Because if we go forward with demo and, and, uh, it's like, when do we get it leveled back out, and there's something for him to use? The, the goal would be to make sure the community has a nice facility of some kind this winter. If, uh, I mean, there's a million things that are gonna happen. We, we don't, we're running the scope of work right now. I don't know the timeline on it. Uh, that's up, up to Barbara and Jenny. The, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be published, and they've gotta choose, okay, who's gonna be the engineers and architects for the project.
Right.
Then it goes out for whatever construction works will be done. So the, the demo is down the road in the fall sometime.
Probably.
Yeah, well, I, what, what do you think, Barbara, on, on, I mean, if scope of work is agreed to in a, a week or something, or whatever is possible?
Then you publish it, then you have to give them, I would say, you give your architect
Month or something during the fall?
A month to present. Um, and then, then you wait for the next meeting and you award based on.
So we could go through a couple of months pretty quick, just getting the architect there.
Right.
You know?
You can eat through sixty days easily. If I walked out of this door right now, I could, I could eat through sixty days trying to find a architect.
Right. Yes, sir.
Is, is there any way that, you know, things do, do go through, that we could time it to where we could have a season open this year with the existing structure? And then be able to. Is, is there any way that, you know, things do, do go through, that we could time it to where we could have a season open this year with the existing structure, and then be able to plan the demolition, say, you know, February? If we can start, um, you know, fracking that concrete, um, you know, foundation and, and deconstructing that, that gives me the opportunity to run the business, have something for the tourists to do, not only the ski area, because they get pretty busy as well, and, and fill in those voids for tourism. And then, and then being able to carry out what's necessary with the construction work, and then, and then hopefully being open uh, for the 2023, uh, 2024.
I believe that would be our entire goal.
Okay.
Is to be able to, we want to make this as quickly and as efficiently as we can. We don't want to keep you out of business. We want to keep skating in the Clockcroft. Even if it's during construction, we want to figure something out.
I, I think it's just a good idea. If we could have everything where it's all rewarded, everything is ready to go to work next March, you know, weather permitting. Then from March to that ski, or skating season, you got, you got a great, great chance of completion. And, uh, because it's all, we can work during, or whoever does it can work during the, uh, the optimal times for each step. Instead of trying to get something started, get halfway through it, and have a mess all winter. So, I think that's a great idea.
I've got a silly question. I was just wondering, is that, that city property, is that right, that park, is that a city? Who, who approved that whole demolition and new skating rink? And when, when did that come to be? I wasn't part of it, I guess.
It was in these meetings for about the last four months.
No, was you guys there, the board that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the design phase right now.
Right now, we're still designing.
And, and in, what I want to say. Kind of a probability phase. It's got to, you need to have a quite a period. It's not a done deal yet.
I didn't know that was the purpose of that park. I thought it was more for tourism and families.
In, with, I, I, in my mind, the skating rink is tourism.
Okay.
Okay? So, any recommendations on the license, or to readdress it later? Do you want to put it off until we, we figure out what's going on with this whole thing? Which would maintain Wicklund in there as, as it, the same. How do you feel about that, Don?
Yes, and, and you know, I'm, I'm open to, you know, renegotiating the, uh, that as well, because I know that there's more infrastructure that's being provided on there. And for what the committee's giving to me, I'm willing to give back.
This way we're not running tomorrow?
Yep. I, I think if, if our plan is to have it where it comes spring, we go do our work.
Right.
Then he's, he's going to have an uninterrupted winter. And, uh, and there's no reason not to just renew his license. Because he, he hears the same thing we're all hearing tonight. Because it comes spring, it's going to be a new deal. But this, this can be revoked at any time, Jeff.
Yes, that's when a license ends.
Correct. It was why we did that, was to at least.
That's right.
One thing, as I reread this today, the maintenance of the Zamboni is your responsibility in, in this license. So I, I didn't know if you remember that was in there also or not.
I have done some maintenance on it already. Um, the only thing that I lack is, I just need to take the actual hydraulic cylinder down to high rolls to have it resealed and, and replon.
So, uh, Tony, did you have something?
I just got a quick question. So, when we had the funds, before we did the skating rink, we were talking about doing a tennis court, pickleball court, basketball court, and all that. And then the funds got shifted to the, the skating rink and everything. So what happens with the new tennis court, pickleball court, basketball court? Are, are we going to get that, or, or no?
I'm not sure. I'm really not. Uh, I don't know anything about a new tennis court. I know they were looking at repainting it. A lot of this was before.
Well, the court is cracking. I mean, it's old, rotted, concrete. I mean, it, it needs to be ripped out and redone. Uh, a new post, and we had talked about doing that with this grant and everything. And I've heard people say, oh, we needed to do something with the money. Well, there was plans to do something with the money. But now it shifted to skating rink, which, which is fine. But now what about what we had planned? A new tennis court, pickleball courts, there's, you know, the elderly people come from Alamo Gordo and, and other people and play pickleball. They love it. And our, our basketball courts, you know, they're falling down, and, and we were going to redo those. And there was talk about putting some exercise equipment around the, the outdoor equipment around the trail.
There's a lot of equipment, new games and stuff that has been ordered. A big, that is one of mysterious projects, is to get those done. There's, uh, what else do we have? Cornhole?
Cornhole, tetherball.
Leatherball, wasn't there volleyball?
Volleyball.
Volleyball.
And there was, there were several different things that she's supposed to be working, I believe she's supposed to be working with maintenance.
Right. And we, we have all that. I know, I know, but, but what happens to the other stuff?
I didn't know about the other stuff. That didn't happen in a meeting.
Okay.
I think it happened in a rec meeting.
I'm not sure. I just, I've heard about this stuff, and now, now it's gone. So I'm just wondering where we stand on that stuff.
I know, I know we tried to have two or three rec meetings. And everything I heard about it was, they kind of just went off their own direction, and there was no focus.
Okay.
And. There, there was a, there was a couple of rec meetings, and then there was a lot of fighting about them, and a lot of fighting outside about them, of what the money was supposed to go to, and we had lots of trouble.
And this was pertaining to this money that you were.
That's the reason that the rec meetings started, was because of this grant. But there was just no, nobody could agree on anything.
Top duty to.
And then we worked together on, okay, we're actually looking at a Main Street project when the idea of the skating rink rebuild came up. And then the bigger that skating rink rebuild got, you know, let's do one large project with the money instead of a whole bunch of small projects. But, you know, as far as a meeting, I never saw anything come across here for any of that. I know there was some talk about repainting it for the pickleball court. And if that's something we need to look at, I mean, we can definitely look at it.
We will have.
Needs to be on the agenda. Sit talk.
Right. All right.
Somebody, somebody wants that done, they should ask to be on the agenda.
That, that works. Okay. And. So where we at on the license agreement? Then it got off track there, sorry. Was it, it is up for renewal, and.
And since we're deciding that we're not going to be doing anything probably until.
Yes, until next spring.
Yeah, then at this point, I would suggest that we renew the license.
No reason not to. You're going to get it at this winter.
And this was kind of like a discussion, my discussion was, are we going to be doing demo next month? And then be completely out, um, through even summer sessions? But I think that the better.
I think it's much, much better. You know, never understood why, like highway departments start their projects in October. You don't get to work through the winter. But we have, we have time for that. We don't have much more time. If it gets started in the spring, because we've got to, we've got to be, that'll be twenty-two, we've got to be substantially complete by.
Twenty-four.
January twenty-four. So that gives us still two years. I think it could be an easy one-year project if it's completely planned and ready to go for March. You know, weather permitting, starting it, then you get in there and push it, so.
So do we need to approve a continuation of existing lease?
Well, if we do nothing, it, it continues the license as it is.
Okay.
Or we can approve a one-year extension on the license. Or we can change it up and look at other options.
Well, you, you really wouldn't be able to approve a new license because it's not on the agenda for action.
Right, it would need to be, if you make that decision, then we need to put it on the license.
Okay, so it is just, the only option is the continuation of the license agreement.
Yep. No change.
With no change, so we could continue it as written, with no change.
It just continues what we have right now.
As long as we can, can stop it, if we want to in March.
Yes.
Then, then, uh, I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to continue. It's, it's been working for a few years. We're, we're not changing the village investment or responsibilities or anything on the facility until we move into the, where the new project ends up being. And then, uh, and so Don knows what he's got over there to work with, and, you know.
Uh, well, the new council will be set by then.
This is true.
True.
You know, so I don't want to see this, uh, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but also, you know, I, I guess that means I have to, if I don't run, I have to come to the council meetings and make my input.
Let me take it the other way.
Yeah, uh-huh.
All right. So the way we have this on the agenda, since it's under consideration to approve the recommendation, um, sorry, um, recommend to continue the license agreement. So basically, our choice is continue it as it is, would be month to month, which is what we kind of talked about. It would stay what we have now. It doesn't do a drop dead date on life.
It's a one-year annual.
So without waiting tight?
Until we stop it.
Yes, revocable at any time. Are you ready for the motion?
I'm not even sure I understand it.
I move to continue the license agreement.
So continue it?
Yes, as is, continue.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to continue the license agreement as is.
I second that.
Do we have any motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, motion passes, three ayes and one abstention. Okay, we move on to recommendation for approval, disapproval of a resubdivision application by Corey Herman, ordinance with MMSA three dash twenty dash five A, number three, and Village Code ten dash three dash four. Presentation by Tom Blesso. My name is Tony Cherry.
Good evening. This is very similar to the property we looked at last meeting, if you recall, was the subdivision. Uh, do they have this whole package?
Yes.
This is a little misleading on the front page.
They only have four pieces.
Yes. That's okay. Well, no, I got some other information. The line I have a match. So it says Camp Herman subdivision. This is not a commercial subdivision. This is an individual, Mr. Corey Herman and his wife, have a piece of property on, uh, on Pierce Canyon. Uh, you know, about halfway in between Sunspot and, and Cox Canyon Highway. And, um, it's about twenty-six and some odd acres. And they are replating it into two pieces, and this is so that they can build a house and get a mortgage that falls under the ten acre limit. So different lenders have different, uh, requirements. And if it's not, if it's an ag lender, they'll lend on a larger piece if there's agriculture activities and everything going on. Uh, I'm assuming this is more of a conventional mortgage, has to stay under ten. So you can see, one trash area is nine point six nine nine acres. It's right under the ten acre limit. And that's where the house is going to be, and that's where the, you know, the construction loan and mortgage and everything's going to be on that property. So, uh, the, the intent is for this, this is going to be the property that they're going to live on. So, uh, Otero County, uh, this is in our ETJ, obviously it's in Pierce Canyon. So it's in our extraterritorial jurisdiction again, within the three mile limit. Uh, they simply want to subdivide it into, into two, into two parcels. Now, Otero County made them go through the long subdivision process, so they had to fill out a forms and, and do all that kind of stuff, even though it's not intended to be a commercial subdivision. Uh, as a municipality, whenever we look at something like this, we can, uh, we can take it in the context of what the people are presenting, that this is the reason they're subdividing it. But we really don't care why they're subdividing it. There's, there's one piece of property now, they're going to divide it, and there's going to be two pieces of property. That's all we care about, because they could turn around tomorrow after we approve and sell it. Um, so we just reviewed, there any impact to us as a municipality? And really, we, we didn't find any. I mean, this is a, this is a large piece of property out of the edges of our ETJ. Uh, there's, you know, there, there's no, they're not certified any of our utilities or anything else. Uh, Otero County has looked at it already through the county process, and there's our electricity to, to the land. You know, so there's really not much of an impact on us at all. So we, uh, are recommending to you to approve this simple subdivision, just like last, just like last month.
Okay, I have a recommendation from the planning and building chair to approve this subdivision. Do I have a motion?
So do we.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Mitchell, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Trustee Teanen, any discussion?
Yes. Now, they can't resubdivide this for five years, is that correct?
Well, there's a, there's a, that's, that's not our provision at all. So the, the camp has its own rules about when you create subdivisions. And, you know, they, they have a rule that you, if you, if you create for small subdivisions, they have to hang on to one parcel for five years. They can sell the other, they can sell one of the two parcels within five years. Otherwise, they have a process. I don't know exactly what it is. Again, it's not really a concern of ours, uh, when we have no such ordinance that that controls that. So like I said, we can listen to the intent of the current owner, but we really don't care. All we know is there's one piece of property, now there's two. Whatever they do at the county, if they, if two people end up owning these two pieces of property, we have to consider that that's liable to happen in the future, and does that affect us? And through our discussion, uh, with the representative from Alamo Tera, who was representing the client, uh, and we didn't see any, any effect on us, uh, in terms of, of having a concern as a municipality. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, resolution two zero two one point zero nine, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Budget approval of interim fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Okay, we do have some changes that need to be made. I know you, that this is going to be easy. Uh, last budget workshop that we have. We cut the police department's new vehicles. What we did not know at that time was, that wasn't really the wish list, that was the necessity. And they had already kept the budget for maintenance on their old vehicles. And so, and he left, which means he probably had a call. He gave me a report here. This one here, okay? So we've got the Kelly Blue Book on the vehicle he needs to maintain. And he's actually got it broke out of everything that he really needs to do on this vehicle. I thought this, he was keeping this one.
He doesn't have a choice to, he has to.
If we don't get a new one.
He has to deadline one of them. If you look at, um, unit three, it's the twenty-ten, and I think that's what the Kelly Blue Book value is, is showing you. Um, the Blue Book value, and I'm so sorry, cut that off. Uh, it's, it's ten nine sixty-three, ten thousand, it's worth ten thousand dollars. The estimate on, on having that fixed, Master Tune and Chevy both are coming back with the same type of estimate. It's going to be anywhere from fifty-five to eighty-five hundred, um, depending on if they have to change out the A arms. And they won't know that until they get into that whole front end and start fixing everything on the front end. Chevy is recommending very, very much discouraging repairing the unit. Chevy is recommending very, very much discouraging repairing the unit.
Are they wanting to sell us a new one?
Are they, no, no, we don't.
I'm just curious why they recommend that we don't repair it.
You buy through the state, the state contract?
We go through a state purchasing contract, and he's buying fours anyway. But they're recommending that we don't repair the entire front end because it's a police department unit. These guys have to jump in these vehicles and come to my house very quickly when I'm getting assaulted.
You have to live in a criminal corridor, just around the corner from me.
No, they get right to my house. But the thing, the thing is, is it's not just pursuit. I know that we had made mention before that they don't have to do high speed pursuits, they should be backing off of those. If I were to call as a citizen, I am not only endangering them by having them drive this unit, but they might possibly be endangering other people that this whole front end is going to fall off.
So, we would trade this in and sell it to the public?
We can do that. Basically, what we're going to do is I'm going to tell you that if you choose, you can fix it. You can go against a major corporation's recommendation in discouraging you and fixing it and continuing to utilize it as a law enforcement vehicle. You're possibly going to lose the engine on this twenty-ten also. So, then you're looking at more than the eighty-five hundred to fix it. So, you're looking at more in maintenance to bring that vehicle back to subpar level for a police unit. So, basically, we want to deadline that unit, it wants, it's dead. You're not going to, it's not worth what it is to fix it.
Barbara, can I ask you a question? In your summary, does it include the extra twenty-five thousand?
No, not yet.
So, we'd be adding twenty-five thousand to police?
If we decide to go with maintenance. If you determine that we're going to deadline unit three, take the unit one that had already been turned into an administration vehicle, stripped completely of everything, gone through maintenance three or four different times, the twenty-twelve Tahoe. If we choose to bring that back in line, turn it into a unit, we're going to have to add the light bars. We're going to have to do all of these. You have to remember, Kevin's not in here, he has a tendency to drive into Elk. So, they, these units get torn up, and the front ends have been fixed and repaired over and over. And I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I had to leave for a call. I'm not sure, I'm assuming it's the unit three that has gone through the front end push chains?
Yes, it's a.
Three times?
David Sanchez's vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all this is to explain why we need to go ahead and buy a new vehicle?
Well, we need to raise the budget by one or the other.
You need to either give us enough money to.
To maintain?
To maintain.
Twenty-seven grand.
Or purchase a new vehicle. And again.
Thirty-six grand.
Yeah.
I'd recommend them to get away from Chevys, if they won't last.
Exactly, well, and that, this Tahoe.
Maybe, maybe not run it over Elk with them.
I knew I was going to come back and haunt me.
You know, the vehicle won't last a hundred thousand miles, but never, never can.
Well, and it's my understanding that everybody has been, all police departments have started going away from Chevys because of this unit, of the Tahoe unit. And we looked at Tahos, and they're way too expensive, and they're, they're for leisure soccer moms, they're not for police units. So, basically, what we're recommending is that you either provide twenty-seven thousand dollars for maintenance and then be expecting us to step in here and say, we're going to need further maintenance because you have tire rotations and oil changes anyway on a new vehicle. It's only going to get worse if you try to take one of these vehicles and fix it.
So, I'm assuming that if we buy a new vehicle, even though it's going to be a police unit, it's warranted with state, just like it's written for our general public, you said?
I believe so, sir, I cannot answer that.
I mean, since it's going to be a police unit, they're not going to try to reduce our program.
It's kind of whatever it is, you know?
I mean, we would still have, if it's a police unit, we're still going to be insuring it and.
I'm sorry, Kevin's not here, there's no ability to share units. In other words, one officer comes on and they, he gets out and the other guy gets in.
Mayor?
Oh.
Do you have an answer for that?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
They can't share units.
They can, but it's really a pain. And it's, a lot of it is our fault, because we did not rein in the hiring process to only have clout cop residents. Our closest police officer is Kevin. Everybody else lives farther away. And we want them to be able to take their vehicles home.
So that they can respond back. If you, if you have to go home in your private vehicle, you're on duty, you have to cover for, just like what has happened right now.
Yep.
We have an officer that had to leave for an injury. Kevin has to cover for that officer until another officer can come in. If that unit is not there, if you're sharing units, then we don't have a spare. That's what we're trying to say. We do not have a workable spare vehicle without spending twenty-seven thousand dollars.
The thing, you keep thinking about the hundred thousand miles, that's on a normal vehicle with normal wear and tear. These guys live in their cars. They're, when they're in work, most of the time they're driving, and most of it's not on the highway, on the dirt road. I mean, they may only be cruising at ten miles an hour. I mean, there is a lot of wear and tear upon living in vehicles. And I know there is a fire station now, but they're still on the road. And then, sitting at the side of the road and going through the, and they assist the sheriff's departments on other stuff outside of town.
So, if I understand his notes correctly, if he would keep unit one as a spare, he doesn't think that twenty-seven thousand for maintenance on a budget, maybe get by, is a good idea. So, he's asking for twenty-five thousand out of the thirty-six to come from our general fund.
Correct.
Then he's going to find the other money from the law enforcement, was that law enforcement police fund?
Yeah.
And so, it's, you know, it's the same money almost as what he won't spend on maintenance or buying a new.
Exactly.
And then this allows us to have something as a spare unit. So, maybe not the best one, but the spare is supposed to be exactly what I'm saying as a spare.
And you're also taking, you're also not, you're taking some of that liability away. When we continue to put things out in this, in these units, there's some liability to the officer and to the public. And we want to reduce that risk as much as possible.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees on that, that's, it's a policeman broken down beside the road can't help anybody, for himself. But for us, on our, to get on with our budget, it's twenty-five for either something new or twenty-seven maybe for something old.
Yeah, with the twenty-seven, you may not use all of it, but there's a really good chance of it. But the one thing that I'm looking at is, twenty-seven, we still have to move lights around, because he's band-aiding what we have. And lights are expensive to move around, with a new one, we move a lot, and then several years ago. The other one, we're moving them next year. I'll order the punishment away one more year.
Is, is this, are there other changes in your budget that we don't know about yet?
Yes.
Yes. What's going on?
I'll do that, yes. Not on the general fund side, but on the water side. Or roads side, I guess I should say.
Okay. You want to do the road plan, or do you want me to? Or do you get Jubal?
We can get Jubal to explain, so I can give the numbers, but.
I'll start this one, I asked Jubal to, obviously, we have some problems with the roads. I asked Jubal to put a plan together. He looked at all the roads, and he figured out what would be the most important and the most, the best ones to start with. So, he's got, he's got about seven roads here that he feels are the most one, the most important to start the first batch with. And he has figured out the tonnage of road patching material, the cost of them there. I don't, if you, did you look up, have a chance to get the rental equipment or any of those prices?
I'm on vacation last week, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to get it. But I'm still working on it, probably by next meeting I'll have it all ready for you. But then you went to, hot mix up here, using our equipment or, you know, hiring them to bring it up here, depending on how it all pays out, which way is going to be cheaper. Like, you're going to be looking at tack oil, you're going to be looking at hot mix, because you just don't want to put this hot mix down on the background. You want some tackle to keep it so it'll bond, hopefully create a bond in what we've got this chip seal. So, that's what we're working on right now.
So, we're looking at getting rid of a whole lot of these potholes, focusing on one?
Yeah, we're not talking about potholes, we're going to be cutting out sections of the road itself and working on, preparing them properly and giving them where, hopefully, they won't create more potholes.
Now, the hot mix prices we got in there, we figured the equipment's probably going to double that price. And I don't know if you have that happy or not?
They don't.
I don't think so.
No, they don't have that.
You can pass that around if you want. We're looking at where to move that money to and from to get it to the roads. Most of our road money comes from.
So, basically, most of your road money comes from the municipal streets, which comes from your gas tax. We still have fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars that's obligated. If you guys will shift to your treasury report, those first two pages, you can probably follow me. If you look at the, if your treasury reports, if you look at Fund Two Sixteen, Uni Streets.
Yes.
You see where it's currently at eighty-five thousand?
Two fifteen?
Cash balance on hand? Fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty-five of that is obligated already to cash match. So, that leaves that fund sitting at the end of this year at thirty-four thousand dollars, with only one gas station in town replenishing revenue. Okay? The other place I can draw this from, that's not the general fund, would be Two Ninety-Five, which is infrastructure. You see that infrastructure is sitting at one forty-nine? One fifty? Again, I have a cash obligation that's going to be coming out of that that we're already obligated to, of seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, which is going to leave that fund at seventy-six thousand dollars, with low revenue coming into it.
Can I ask Jubal something? Jubal, if this is the cost of your material, then this is, you and your guys are going to be the ones to put this down, or are you hiring people?
Well, that's what we're looking at, is it going to be beneficial having us do it, or hire an after-contract agent to do it? Because we don't have the equipment, we're going to have to hire rent rollers, bigger, you know, pretty much everything, you know, because we don't have anything to do real repair properly. You know, we have plate tappers, but they don't tap it hard enough.
But do you think if you hired it done, would it double that number?
It'd be doubled, yes.
So, that to me, if we, we're at seventy-five thousand or so to do the patch that you said.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I've shared the total number. If you save money, great, but if we just take that on, this is what you want to.
It'll be time consuming, it'll be a time crunch trying to maneuver everybody around, get things done, and keep the village going on at the same time as this.
It's the same thing, you're going to fight the weather.
Yes.
Beautiful time right now to do roadwork. Soon as we get going, it'll be raining or freezing or something.
That's what it takes to make it rain.
Yeah. Start tomorrow.
So, that.
So, I guess I'm asking you, do you want me to, if you approve that expenditure, where would you like me to take those funds from, general fund?
Well, I think before we decide where it comes from, well, I mean, general fund, yes, the, we need to total this before we say, saying yes piecemeal is tough.
Well, I'll work on that too, rest of this week, I'll get that all put together, and I'll submit next month.
But if we put seventy-five, if we're going to try and approve it now.
I need to approve the inner budget tonight, because I have to have it submitted to DFA with the resolution by May thirty-first.
If we put seventy-five thousand in there. And, okay, what's next?
That's again, that's what I'm asking you, do you want me to take it, that's it, that's it, those two shoes are it. I know I've asked for a lot, but it's been a long time.
The way I look at this paving, this is a cumulative issue over ten years, twenty years, I mean, this didn't happen last year. So, when we try to force it into one budget, it's always a big number, we're like, oh my gosh, where's the money coming from? Well, we needed to have been deciding that for ten or twenty years.
And that's something that, as soon as we complete this, that's my next project, is to start.
Get us a line item.
Get us a line item, get us some funds, yes.
Because this is not going away, this is going to be from now on, we might as well.
We need to plan for it.
We might as well just say it's going to happen. So, to me, that's why we have reserves. We built up reserves through all these years instead of working on those. So, the, that's what reserves are for. You say, okay, what is it that caught us by surprise? It's not by surprise, we just didn't address the issue all these years. Well, now we've got to address them, our roads are getting to where they're just a huge problem. If seventy-five thousand lets you have any chance of a catch-up.
No. I mean, we'll catch up eventually, but it's like right now, though, on these roads, the village itself does not have anything going into them. Everything we have goes into water or wastewater.
Exactly.
We don't have none that wanted on the municipal streets. And that's what we've been fighting since I've been here fifteen years, trying to figure out where can we get the money to put into the budget for roads? And we just have not been able to find any kind of money to put into the line item for the roads.
Which, again, I think supports the idea that this is an accumulative problem, not a due.
Right.
And yet, like all things that have been kicked down the road, literally, it's like, where's the road? It's like, you got to do something. You don't have to fix every road in town, that's no way this is going to do. But you start a process where if in future budgets, is it going to, what sits line item going to be? It may take you ten years to get a grip on things. But if we don't ever start.
We'll never get time.
We never get, never make improvements if we don't decide we have a problem. So, I think logic says, you've got to pick a number, do what we can now, and then future budgets have to address this issue, it won't go away.
And the biggest, the other problem too, is you don't want to take and start repairing a lot of roads on some of these streets until you repair the infrastructure. You don't want to be throwing good money after bad, because like Corona, you got two miles of roads down there, that's all left pack joints going from the launch down to spur landing. I estimated that about four months ago, I figured that out, it'd be almost two point five million dollars to repair the piping, the water lines, for service tasks to the homes, and repaving is about two point five million dollars, just to do roughly a mile and a half of road.
See, and that gets back to our critical outlay money.
Yes.
It's like, okay, what priorities are it? Water, you got to get the water lines, if there's leaks in those water lines, we've got to figure out a sequence on how we determine that. And then, that's a priority above paving. Because if you don't want to pave it, then they have to go fix the water line, that doesn't make sense. So, it's, if we have paved sections we can't get to in a foreseeable future, that's where we had discussed, going back to a higher quality gravel road, and saying, it's all we can do. Because if we have too many competing problems, and all of them end up being multimillion dollar projects. So, it's, it's like, where do you start? This is a band-aid, but you start.
Yes. This is, what I'm hoping for is this is the first step. Judge.
I've got a question. Does any gas tax trickle down to the local government?
The gas tax from also stuff, I'm not sure exactly how that works. Barbara, do you know how that works for? We get the gas tax from also.
Yes.
Do we get all of that? Do we get a portion of that?
No, you just get a portion. It's kind of like, um, you're like a broker system. You, you go to a family dollar, you pay seven point seven five percent. The state gives five point one percent. The county gives, I think it's like point six eight percent and we get like two percent. Um, so our, our gasoline house is, is a penny or five cents?
I can just tell you what the village got with thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes. Yes. On average, you're, we're getting.
Thirteen thousand dollars as well was in this audit report from gas tax.
Gas tax for a year?
For a year. And that's all we have going into fixing our homes. So we have to find another revenue stream to be able to fix those roads.
Guess we need to look at property tax.
We, we do need to look at some options. I, I need to resume. But we need to look at some options and see where we need to move some money.
I mean, it's, it's really hard to explain to, and, and hopefully everyone will go back and share it. Um, you know, we take the calls on the potholes and, and, and the guys have to deal with it also. Uh, we want to be able to fix the roads. We just do not have any revenue coming in that allows us to fix those roads. So we're looking at that and, and hopefully we'll be able to start diverting particular funds that we would normally put just sitting into the general fund, um, taking a percentage of that general fund and diverting it to municipal streets or to infrastructure so that we can utilize that revenue.
Yeah, if, if people see improvements in their roads and you say, okay, remember roads, here's what we've got to do to do this, even if it's, we're doing this block, this block, year after year. Then I think you can, you can sell it if you get support for it. It's when we don't fix the roads and things go up anyway, then it's like, well, what y'all do with the money?
And, and the problem is, is that this has been, like you said, trustee Maynard, so long, long term. Um, that at this point, you're going to be angry when I raise something because I raised it, or you're going to be angry because the roads are not fixed. So keep that in mind, whatever, if something does have to go up, keep in mind that there's a reason behind it. Place a phone call, ask us what that reason is and where that money's going, what we're going to do with it. Um, because I know you're angry that you have, I'm angry that I have to drive on the roads the way that they are. I live in this village too. You know, so we, we want to fix them.
If I read our reports correctly, we have somewhere around two point seven, uh, on deposit tonight. Okay, so that's, that's money that's been accumulated since the beginning of time. But this, this, if we say this is general fund seventy-five thousand dollars and then we get to a point, so okay, now you depleted your general fund. Then you, you replenish your general fund out of your reserves. And then this time next year, you've got to develop a plan.
And keep in, keep in mind too, going back to the beginning of this meeting when we talked with the auditor. He, remember, he says we've gained a hundred and thirty thousand this year.
Over a year.
Over a year. So we've done well in saving and spending. Of course, COVID has helped with that a little bit. Um, but we have increased our general fund. Um, and we do have the emergency reserves. I just don't want to tap into that infrastructure and that municipal street fund if, if we don't have to. I don't want to, to take those down to nothing.
In, in devil's advocate, I'm looking at a deficit, I'm looking at a police vehicle and I'm looking at roads. You just said we had a hundred and thirty gain. I'm looking at a hundred and thirteen tonight. So we're really having that gain of seventy.
All right, so, but at least we.
Well, I'm just positive, but I just, you don't want to say, well, we made a hundred and thirty. Well, we're probably way to spend it.
Well, you can't, I mean, this is, this is the problem. This is why I'm sitting here saying, I need a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
I just want, I just want, I mean, you know, we have, you know, I don't know if anybody's been using their pens on paper, you know. I'm just saying, yes, that's great. But, you know, and when we say, we've been rebuilding these reserves from the beginning of time, okay, from the beginning of time, two hundred, two and a half point seven million dollars since the beginning of time. It's not a whole lot of money every year then, you know, I mean, we incorporated in nineteen forty-eight. I'm just trying to be very realistic about this. I think, I don't know, I just feel like that we just need to be cautious, you know. The state of New Mexico doesn't operate on that same, you know, oh, let's jump, let's get into the permanent fund, you know. Well, now we've cut off oil, the permanent fund is not, it's a very catch-up quick thing. You know, so I just want to be more realistic than my.
See, and then is this going to become like a new hundred thousand dollar annual?
Right.
Line item.
Then you do that every year, pretty soon, twenty-seven years, we're done.
Well, but you.
You're not maintaining the roads. You have to have money.
Understood, understood.
And then, then that's where like if you, if it's a cumulative problem, it needs an accumulative answer. Because it's like, again, it's without going for a huge amount of money to the state.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So it's like, okay, internally, we need a new source because we've never had a source to maintain our roads. That's why we never maintained roads. There was, I couldn't believe it, the first time I understood the budgets and there, there was.
Not a line item.
Such an important item. And anytime I'm in another town, I drive on a really nice street and I'm like, how do they do it? Well, they got fifteen ounces or something, you know. I mean, there, there's other revenues that we just don't have. So since we can't count on gasoline tax to do the job, we've got to say, okay, where, where do we pull the money? Or where, what do we raise in, in what amount? If you're going to try to raise two million dollars, then, then you're not going to do it local taxing. If you're trying to raise a hundred thousand, that, that's a more manageable number. And whether that's a good number or not, I don't know. That, that's like a little bit more than what he's asking for here today. And if he can do that kind of patching every year, would that help get you somewhere?
Well, it would, but I've been pursuing that aspect of, I've talked to Barbara, I haven't talked to the mayor on property. I think we need to start imposing impact fees on new construction. Because you know, the new construction, they're only paying the village for a water tap of fifteen hundred dollars and five hundred dollars for a sewer tap. That doesn't do nothing for your expansion or any upkeep for your water plant and your wastewater plant. You need to get outside like the bigger cities. I mean, we don't have to charge them like they do, but charge like ten thousand dollars for an impact fee for both plants. Because we don't have no money generating except for our GRTs and our water cells and our sewer cells that we collect any money from. And that is not enough to keep the upkeep on our plants. So we need to start looking at charging the consumer or the customer an impact fee of five thousand or ten thousand dollars just so we can get some savings built up into the town. Because we don't have nothing other than our sales from the people that are generating the funds here. And if we don't do something like that, we're never going to make it.
You, you'll never, you'll never raise a hundred thousand a year with an impact fee.
Well, no, you won't. At least over the years, you will.
But let me tell you what you will do. You'll build a lot more homes outside of the village's pothole. Because the, every one of us driving these roads, a new home already pays about fifteen thousand in grocery seed stacks or more. The idea of hitting a new home more, you're just telling the new homeowner, you don't want it.
No, we're not saying that. We're saying, hey, we need a market to build here, but we need to have some kind of funding to keep it going. And we can take a percentage of that and put it towards roads.
I think we need to, probably after the budget is done, everything kind of calms down a little bit, we need to have a big work session on all options on the table.
Sure.
And see where we can get money and see what we can do because we want the least impact on our, on our residents, but with the most advantages. You know, we don't want to hurt tourism, but we sure don't want to hurt residents, but we, we need good roads, we need good water lines, or we don't have either. You know, the tourist or the residents. So we do, we need to have a, just a sit-down work session and look at all options.
Agreed.
I don't know that that's something we need to do tonight.
Nope.
But and I would like Jubal and Tony and Scott in on that when we start looking at these things. Charge a lot, higher rate from skating park. Okay.
How about the budget approval?
Well.
What else we got?
I need, that's it. I just need to know, are we approving these two requests? Are we disapproving these two requests? When do you?
Well, if we need a starting point and we need a, a police vehicle to maintain public safety, then I would make the motion that we entertain the budget request of twenty-five for a police vehicle and seventy-five for road improvements.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table to approve the budget with the request of the twenty-five, like twenty-five for the police vehicle and seventy-five for the road improvements. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions?
What was your recommendation on departments to, the ones you identified?
Well, my recommendation. My recommendation ultimately is to stay away from municipal streets.
Okay.
Um, and infrastructure after the commitment that we already have is going to be sitting at seventy-six. As trustee Maynard pointed out, we have the emergency reserves that are sitting at one forty-five, or we have the general fund.
Well, then I would say that we would take at least fifty percent of it out of the emergency reserves.
Okay.
And then.
You take half out of general fund, half out of emergency and then, and then work on how to fund it in the future?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and I just want to clarify, that, that's going to be, we have a deficit of a hundred and thirty-seven, eight ninety-three in this budget. Correct. So that's, that's really the number we're looking for is a hundred and thirty, thirty-seven, eight ninety-three. So it's not just the one hundred.
Right.
Put it up. Let's sneak it up.
No. Judge, I, I want everything out in the open. Okay, so there's a motion on the table to approve it with the budget adjustments. Splitting it between general fund and emergency reserve for the difference, correct? And a second?
That's important.
Any further discussion? Tom?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, need a roll call vote? Mr. Smaga?
Aye.
Mr. Teeman?
Aye.
Mr. Maynard?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Aye, budget adjustment passes with a roll call vote unanimous. Okay. Next, resolution twenty twenty-one, two one one zero, regular election municipal resolution. This is completely different because of our election law changes, but we still have to pass a resolution.
Basically, this is a resolution that I'll send off to the county clerk. Um, they will be doing our elections. Yes, sir.
I would suggest using the word trustee instead of counselor because legally we are, they are trustees.
Okay, because they, they suggested counselor, but I'll go with your recommendation.
No, I mean, I, we're not, we're, we're.
You want to do counselor slash trustee?
No, that's okay. I, I'll go with the attorney's recommendation and change it to trustee.
That works. We are trustees.
So we have one, uh, uh, basically two municipal trustees and one municipal judge, um, all of them for four-year terms. That will be, um, on the election for November second. Um, this resolution, and anyone is, is free to call me and we will publish this. Um, it is also on the Otero County Clerk's website for the early voting, um, for the mobile voting. We will have, uh, mobile voting here in Cloudcroft on Saturday, October twenty-third, from tick ten to six. Um, and then it also gives instructions on candidacy. I believe it is August twenty-fourth, if you would like to declare for your candidacy. Um, August twenty-fourth, between nine and five, at the county clerk's office. And I will also have information on that if anybody chooses to come in.
You know, does it rec, does it say at this point, you have to have a current voter's registration to declare your candidacy?
No, it doesn't say that at this point, uh, but they will, once you declare your candid, candidacy, they will check that. Basically, they, they, they came out day before yesterday and said, we need this resolution done and turned in by June fifth. And then they didn't have anything on their website and then they put it up yesterday.
And so this is for the, the state and the county?
Yes.
The count of Otero?
Yes. So the county of Otero will take care of all of our elections from this.
And this is because the county took over our election process instead of us having a vote.
I would, uh, make the motion to adopt this with the correction at the top, second line, that the word changed from count to county.
Trustee.
Second line on the top.
Okay.
Just a title, just.
On the second.
The resolution number twenty twenty point ten, twenty, twenty-one election resolution.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one point one zero. As amended, do I have a second? Second? I do have it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being resolution, it'll be a roll call vote. Trustee Smaga?
Aye.
Trustee Teeman?
Aye.
Trustee Maynard?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell?
Aye.
Aye, for a unanimous roll call vote. Motion carries. Okay, opposed amendments to ordinance three five four, January twelfth, two thousand and ten, chapter six, one dash six dash three, DMV administrative fees. This one is the five dollar fee that we charge since two thousand and ten for the DMV. We've recently, well, you all met our new hire last month, so we have increased the hours. They, we are open as long as the road office is open, the DMV is open and is working wonderfully.
Very well.
Um, and getting lots and lots of people coming in. That is one, I think, very painless way to increase a little bit of revenue is to raise that five dollar fee. And right now, I did a little bit of research, uh, MBD and Express, I don't know. Gosh, thirty-five dollars walk in the door before you do anything at all. Uh, there are other places that have other prices on there. I don't know what, we looked up.
They go anywhere up to sixty-five, uh, thirty-five. Uh, it depends on what you want. There's places that, uh, will do your VIN inspection for you, that we go out and it's free as part of the transaction, they charge you a hundred and sixty.
How many registrations a year do we do approximately? Do you, do you have an idea?
I can't, I can't tell you registrations. We could go back and we could break it out between titles and registrations and IDs and.
How many were, were the five dollar fee with?
Every transaction.
Every transaction.
Every transaction. So today alone, today she did twenty-two transactions.
Yeah.
And generated a hundred and ten dollars in revenue of the five dollars.
So, so what was our revenue last year for that five dollars?
Um, it normally runs us right around twenty thousand.
Okay. That, that, that's just as good. So if we, what, what are you, yeah, what are you?
Uh, we were, we were looking at anywhere between seven fifty and ten dollars. And I wanted to get a feel for, for y'all. I don't want to run anybody out. I'm trying to get more and more people.
Well, I'll take your, I did it just renewed our license. They have to take, they have, you have to just like go to the restaurant and you have to get your hang down on the, on the, on the reservation. You have to get your name down on the, on the, on the reservation with.
And I honestly think that the state is gonna stay that way for quite a while. State offices are gonna stay that way.
And so I'm not trying to, you know, I already made the comment, I hate taxes. I, I don't want to raise taxes. We're losing the bottom. And I think this is one of the painless ways that we can help out a little bit.
All the comments I hear about our service to offer the MBD is all positive. A lot of people drive up from Allen and Gordle because it's no lines, pleasant, get to come to Cloudcroft. I, I think, I think Cloudcroft's worth painting, so.
So maybe an increase of 250?
I'd stay away from 50 cents, a broken dollar, email or email.
I'd go to 10 if I had to.
I'd move to 10.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Today I have a motion on the table from trustee Teeman to raise the convenience fee from $5 to $10. It's been 10 years, it's a good amount, but, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have to renew mine every year. Cloudcroft is 10 bucks every year, whereas everybody else gets four years for this Cloudcroft.
Yes, yes it is, yes it is.
Except George.
To reward for getting old.
Any further discussion?
I would then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We do it quickly.
You better try to get it out a little bit.
When will it?
A little, I'll, at your next meeting. It'll go ahead and affect five days after your next meeting.
Because it's an ordinance.
Cause it is an ordinance we have. That works. You've got a month to redo.
All right, I'm planning revenue growth.
Yes, you are.
Get two licenses.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to executive session?
We can do that or we can do the bills and.
You, you can't go into an executive session unless it's on the agenda.
It is.
I don't have, but I had it in the marriage report.
It's not listed as executive section.
You have to be specific about what you're going to discuss. It's gotta, you gotta.
I'm gonna need to.
Put that in there. Might need to. We may have to do a special meeting on this to, to get in there. But it does give the option, the opportunity if anybody wants to be on this committee, shoot me an email or Barbara an email or bring a letter of interest through the village and we'll get it. And to rewind, this is the, the committee to revoke at the water and sewer ordinances. I'll win and see if we can get those rewritten.
Jeff, any, ask a question, any, any penalties and interests or stuff that have been accumulated to date? Even if we change our, our rule in the future, what, what happens to these sums that have built up right now?
They're there.
They're there.
I mean, you, you can eventually write them off.
As bad debt?
This paid order allows you to do that.
But, but we can't forgive them because.
You can forgive the late fees.
Yeah, you can.
We can?
Yes. You just have to forgive the water.
So that would stand the leaning against property?
You know, you have, if you're gonna go into executive session, you better, you need to look at the open meeting act and look specifically at what is prevented to be done. Because it has to be specific and notice to the public. And I'm not sure talking about.
The reason for the executive session is not for the de-ordinance. It is because I wanted to show some of the trustees some examples which would include some names and account numbers. That does not need to be in an open meeting and that is what.
I'm not, I'm not sure, unless, unless it involves debt, revolving litigation, personnel matters. I mean, there's very limited things that you could go into executive session about. I'll take a look at it.
And that's what I get on.
See, I'll find you something for you.
In general, a pass due water because water leans against the property. As much activity as we've had in the last few years on home sales, that should have just caught everything up. I think so. We've had to pay the back due water?
It, it should.
There's like seven houses per sale on Cloudcroft right now.
I, I, I don't think what you're discussing is, is anything other than a public record. It's not confidential. I think it's, it's anybody. I wanted to look at every single.
And I, I will call you because I have a question as to whether my auditors are interpreting the ordinance correctly to begin with. When you look at the ordinance, the ordinance says 10% of the bill.
Let, let me take a look at it because I, I mean, I was reading that in his, I'm thinking.
And I'm, yeah.
And you mentioned that it's, it's confusing. I'm not sure it's so confusing.
And see, the, the first thing to me in my mind, you identify, okay, number one, what are the pass dues and who owes and that, that's existing.
All of that is an open record.
Then, then number two, what, what do you want to fix? You gotta, you gotta always define your, what's your goal here? And then you, then you get into rewriting or, or something. So there's three steps. Because what's owed is owed to the village.
Right.
And, and that's under whatever, where the rules go to man and that's the way they are. So.
Okay, well, we're not going to executive session, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
That'll be fine once the budget.
You just do it?
Yes, we're fine.
You got it?
Yes, we're done with the budget. It's good.
We'll have a resolution to end of June to confirm the final budget. This is the interim budget. It has to be input that you can't change unless LGD reopens it. So, but this is pretty much the final. Should not change the law.
Okay, I will stand for one more motion.
Yeah, how about the acknowledge?
I thought we did that.
We did, we did.
Why didn't we do that, George? Count on you.
That moves we acknowledge the bills that have been paid and the reports submitted.
Okay, have a motion to acknowledge bills and reports.
I'll say it then.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, go on, second. Move and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?